Okay. So, good afternoon, everybody. And my name is Tomaso Charli. I'm senior research fellow at UNU Medid and Spru, University of Sussex. I'm extremely delighted to chair this session. I'll be extremely brief because we have lots of content to cover. This session was designed to bring together papers that look at various sources of unstructured data in order to understand what is the changing horizons in technologies and how this is affecting labour markets. So we're doing this a little bit in steps. We know that technologies are changing quite a lot. I mean, we all talk about ChatGPT, but it's not just ChatGPT. There's loads of other technologies. There's computational power which is changing. There's blockchain which is changing dramatically the way in which we encrypt and we use data. There's a lot of those technologies which are changing, which are shifting quite a lot these skills which are needed and the skills which are demanded on the market. So this is what we're going to discuss today, using different sources of unstructured data in order to better understand what are the technologies which are emerging and how they're changing the skill compositions. So again, we're going to do that in steps. In the first paper, Liz Gallagher and colleagues from NESTA will look at how we can better understand the skills requirement across the UK using online job vacancies data. Then we have two papers which look at the connection between emerging technologies. We have one paper which looks specifically at robot and look at the connection between what the design of robots is doing in terms of replacing occupations, saving jobs. And we're looking at another paper in which we're looking at a more varied number of application, more varied number of technologies and how industries and occupations are exposed to these technologies which are emerging. And then we combine this information, using both information on the skills from job ads and from the technologies in order to understand which companies were adopting these technologies and how this is shifting the job market. So I won't take much longer. I'm going to introduce the first speaker, who's Liz Gallagher. We're going to have this in 15 minutes presentation, five minutes for you to ask questions and particularly burning questions, detailed questions. So overall, one paper is going to last for 20 minutes. And then in the end, we're going to have a 10 minutes discussion about this whole understanding of how technologies relate to skills and how this is changing overall. Liz, sorry, it's yours. You have 15 minutes plus five. Let me change.
Thanks. Oh, great. Hello, and thanks for coming to see this talk today. So I'm going to be talking about what NESTA is doing on extracting skills from online job adverts. And this work is done in tandem with India Kurl, who's in the audience, and Kath Steeman, who's speaking later, and Jack Vines. So I'm going to give a bit of introduction to our work at NESTA and who NESTA are, and then talk about our algorithm for extracting skills from unstructured job adverts. And then I'll do, share a little bit of the analysis that we've done, just to get a flavour for it, and talk about what's next for NESTA. So who are NESTA and what is the Open Jobs Observatory? So NESTA are a charitable organisation that design, test and scale new solutions to society's biggest problems. And we have three mission areas. The first one is a fairer start, which is about narrowing the outcome gap between children growing up in disadvantage and the local and the national average. The second is a healthy life, which is about increasing the number of average number of healthier years lived in the UK. And the third is a sustainable future, which is about accelerating the UK's transition to net zero. And we've had a number of projects on skills and jobs over the past years. And as we become more mission focused as an organisation, we're going to try to reposition this jobs work so they're aligned with the missions. And I'll speak a bit about that in our future work. So the Open Jobs Observatory is a database of online job adverts, which we've been collecting since January 2021. We now have six and a half million job adverts which are collected on a daily basis. And we've built various algorithms to extract information from these job adverts, including location and skills, which is what I'll talk about today. And we've built various open source tools to investigate the UK labour market on top of these extracted bits of information. And at the beginning, it was supported, this work was supported by the Department for Education and more recently, ESCO. So how did we extract skills from unstructured job adverts? So we started from the job advert level like this, and we had two steps. The first was to identify skills within them. And the second was to map them to a standardised taxonomy. So when you see, we would also like Excel, we want that to map to one standardised Excel skill, which in this case was Use Spreadsheets Programme. And how we did this was train a neural network to pick out the skills in the text. So as a team, we labelled hundreds of job adverts with where the skills were in them, and we used that as training data. And secondly, for the mapping, we were looking at the most semantically similar matches. So we had the European Commission's ESCO taxonomy and Lightcasts, and we were trying to find those most similar matches between the extracted skills and their taxonomies. And we've released this as an open source Python library, so that's including the trained model. So if you are familiar with Python, you can use this and extract skills from any, if you have a database of job adverts, you can use this. And we also have a tonne of information on model performance. Because our algorithm has many steps and each of them, they need their own metrics. And, but don't worry if you're not familiar with Python, we've also have this front end tool where you can select a taxonomy to map to, insert your job advert text and press Extract Skills to get them. So the strengths of the algorithm, we feel, are that we can extract skills that haven't been seen before. So although the training data and the ESCO taxonomy don't contain the skill React, which is a programming language, it still managed to take it out of that text and furthermore map it to a suitable ESCO skill of using scripting programming. So you could see how this could be useful for emerging skills, which perhaps taxonomies might not be up to date with. And the library can be adapted to your chosen taxonomy. So we've kind of mapped skills to ESCO and to Lightcast, but that doesn't, you can also put your own taxonomy if you prefer. And thirdly, you can match to different levels of the taxonomy. So this might be handy when the job advert mentions a broad skill group rather than something quite specific. And in terms of quality, as I mentioned, there's a few different steps to the algorithm. So this was kind of our way to calculate how well it was performing the whole way through. So we had a randomly sampled dataset of 171 skills that the algorithm had extracted and mapped to the ESCO taxonomy. And I mean, you can, you can see the results. The count is the number of those skills that were in each category. So you can see that our skill entity quality, how well it extracts those skills, we felt like it was very good 75% of the time and okay 19% of the time. And those okay type categories might be where it says trucks and vehicles is a skill. And it's missed the word driving trucks and vehicles. And so that's, that's not great, but actually, when you match it to ESCO, it often still does a good job at adding that to driving vehicles as the standardised skill. So limitations of the approach, as you might expect, metaphors aren't dealt with that well. So understand the bigger picture is mapped to a skill about interpreting technical documentation. And also, multiple skills can be difficult. So we can use basic semantic rules to split up sentences like developing visualisations and apps into developing visualisations and developing apps. But sometimes the sentence can be quite complex and in those situations, it can be hard to separate the skills. So for these reasons, the kind of, the results that you might see need to be considered. So as I mentioned at the beginning, we have a dataset of job adverts. So using a sample of this, we analysed the most common skills that came out. And we had two focuses to our analysis. One was regional focus and the other was occupation focus. So on the regional focus, we developed this online tool where you could select a region. So here, I selected London. And you can see the most common skill for jobs in London are communication, followed by planning and scheduled events and activities. And this kind of skill profile for each region also allows us to compare regions. So in this plot, you can see how London compares to the rest of the UK in terms of its skill profile. And you see that London has more skills to do with software and finance than the rest of the country does. And just as a comparison, I've also got Scotland here. So we had to group the Scottish regions because there wasn't as much data for them. But you see that communication comes out top for Scotland, followed by showing a positive attitude. And Scotland's particularly big on providing medical, dental and nursing care in comparison to the rest of the country. So moving on to that occupation focus of the analysis, in a similar way, we could group the data by occupations. So in this, in this example, I've chosen the driver's occupation. And you can see the most popular skills asked for in driver job adverts, and that's number one is customer service. And here are some examples of sentences from the job adverts. And again, building on those skill profiles for each occupation, you can compare occupations. So you could see the most similar occupations to drivers, and that is those in the trades and labour category. And you could see how this sort of thing might be useful for career transitions or indeed the risk of automation in your occupation. I've also put the same analysis for waiting and bar staff there. So as you may expect, the number one skill asked for is serving food and drinks. So what's next for our work at NESTA on jobs? So as I mentioned earlier, we have, we're becoming more mission aligned, and one of our missions is a sustainable future. So the next part of our work, and we've just started this project, is all about green jobs and skills. And what we want to do is get to a point where we can take at the job advert level, so like something like this, we can find three measurements, one of them being some greenness score for occupations, and an industry greenness score, and a skills greenness score. And we're hoping with this multi-dimensional and continuous measure of greenness, we can build up a picture of green jobs without actually relying on one single occupation, one single definition of green jobs. And we want to build some products on top of this. And as I said, we're really at the beginning of this. So we haven't done any of this yet, but we've been talking about it. So perhaps having some sort of interactive dashboard for the, for the green measures and, or we could perhaps partner with some job board to identify green skills and jobs on their website. And finally, that the mapping of green career transitions could also be possible. And I think this is where we'd really like to chat with anyone interested in green jobs. As I said, we're at the beginning of this project, so if anyone is interested in green jobs and wants to come and chat, then please do. So I mentioned a few tools there, so that QR code should link to those online tools if anyone is interested, but you can also come and chat later as well. And thanks for listening.
Thank you, Liz. Fantastic. Thanks for doing that in such a short time. We have actually quite a lot of time for questions.
Thank you. Andrew Gurney from the Treasury. I thought that was very interesting, so thank you. My question was, you had the, said that the algorithm, you know, found it difficult to say, seeing the big picture, but presumably you can kind of overwrite that kind of thing and supplement the algorithm, is that right?
Shall I answer questions one by one?
As you prefer.
What do you prefer, Liz?
I prefer, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, exactly. We can overwrite, so. And we have done that on a few occasions. I think we had another metaphor in there, which I've now forgotten. But yeah, we can, especially for the most popular ones that come up, which we feel aren't doing so well. We could create a mapper for those.
That was very interesting. Thank you very much. And I'm going to come and talk to you about the green skills later. Just two very quick questions. What is the time dimension? So you look at data today, or can you say, get information over a certain period of time? And do your skills map to occupations codes, standard occupational codes and industry codes? Is there a mapping between what you can find in the data and SICs and SOCs?
Yeah. I'm glad you asked that because I've been thinking about SICs and SOCs quite a lot, absolutely. On the first one, on the time component, we have data since January 2021. And in the analysis that I showed, we don't really do a time component, so it's just a random sample from, from that dataset. But yeah, I agree, I think it would be fascinating to do something over time. And on SICs and SOCs, yes. So here, we actually just use our, the data is from READ, so we use the occupation codes, well, occupation categories. But in the green jobs work that we're, we're doing, so that's exactly the first hurdle to create those mappers between the job titles and SOCs or the company names and SICs. Yeah, love to chat about that.
Thank you very much. Yeah, super interesting. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about what you, the way in which you think about skills? So what's the theory behind this in a way? And because you mentioned positive attitude as one of the skills, but, I mean, I agree it's a skill, but I don't know how that fits into, as opposed to calculation or something different. So yes, thanks.
Yeah, good question. We, I think our kind of way to do it as we were tagging the data was to be thinking about what we'd like the algorithm to, to take out. And we always had in mind that we'd map that to a taxonomy, so things like positive attitudes. If we took it out, then we can see that that might be a transversal skill within the skills taxonomy that we use. So we could always filter at the end to remove those types of skills. But there is, there's potentially a problem in the fact that we have, it's a bit of ambiguity about what's a task and what's a skill. And we tended to categorise tasks as skills, especially when they were very linked to a skill, like you will be making Python programmes, you kind of need to have Python skills to do that. So, but yeah, it's, wasn't always crystal clear how to do that.
Hi there. Shumit D. Choudhury, Office for National Statistics. I was just wondering if you've done any work on looking at skills mismatch? So you focused on the labour demand or the skills demand? Whether, once you pulled that information from your algorithm, can you do something similar with understanding the types of workers? And then the second bit was, have you thought about looking at how the skills change over time, like the demand of a certain job? Yeah, those are my two questions. Thank you.
So in terms of the skills mismatches, are you talking about the, perhaps having a dataset of applicants to those jobs as well? I mean, it would be, yeah, it'd be really great to do something like that. We don't have that, that dataset. And the day, the, the model is trained on job advert text, not, I guess, like CV text. But we have been wondering whether it would, how well it would do on CV text. We haven't tested that out. And in, in terms of over time, yeah, we haven't done anything on that in this project. Something we did do in our previous project was look at the effect of COVID on skill demands and, yeah, changes. But yeah, fortunately, this project was a bit, little less on the analysis and a bit more on the data science side.
Thanks, Liz. I'm, I'm interested in, it was a great presentation. I'm interested, so let's go back to one of the questions earlier about, for example, the positive attitude as soft skills. That's something that has been coming up recently in the literature. And I'd like to know whether there's any, from the text you analyse, whether there's any link with training to something and that. So whether you can establish a link between the kind of skills required and what the firm aims to train on the job in case. That's something that would be extremely policy relevant, I think, beyond the education, you know, the formal education, and something that probably would contribute to this literature a lot. Any thoughts on that?
Of course, yeah.
You okay?
Just to say, I'm reading one out loud from the ZOOM. So there's a question from Vladimir from ZOOM. Are you doing any work on matching the jobs and skills you extract from job postings to qualifications coming out from the education system? So matching educations and job ads?
Kind of relatively similar questions. Oh, sorry. Yes, yeah.
Can I ask you, when you talk about green skills at the end, you also mentioned gender. To what extent do you pick up jobs which actually mention either gender or things like specific ethnic groups? In other words, the sorts of things which normally you're not, or age, the sorts of things which you're not normally supposed to seek in job advertisements? So age, sex and ethnicity, but anything else?
Okay, so on the kind of question of qualifications and matching to those, so on our, in our algorithm, we, I didn't mention it, but we extract skills, but we actually also extract experiences. Because there's often parts of a job advert which are kind of a bit distinct. They might say that you need five years' experience in a lawyer's office or something like that. And I feel like that could be used, the, the way we've done it in our tagging, I'm sure we could do the same for that kind of on-the-job learning, perhaps? And then label them separately as a different category. So, you know, as I said, I didn't explain the experience aside, but we do tag, this is a skill, this is an experience, this is a learning opportunity, we could perhaps do. I can't really remember, I guess we weren't really looking out for learning opportunities. I can't remember how the language really worked or how, how different it was to the language around skills. Yeah. And on the gender question, I feel like what we'd most probably do is rather than at the job advert level to extract gender, as you say, it would be difficult, it would be more that we could take data of gender imbalances in occupations and match each job advert to their occupation and then to the, say, the gender pay gap or something like that.
Sorry, you don't ever get in job, well, you do get in job adverts. You do get questions about, sometimes which are very gender specific, jobs are, but sometimes you get things like dynamic, which is, I think, a questionable category. And sometimes you get things like, you know, we have a retirement age or something along with this, to push out certain other people.
It's okay if we pick up that during the panel? Because we're running out a little bit of time. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Liz. Applause. Thank you very much. And next presentation is going to be, if we go quickly, Jacopo Staccari from Catolica University in Milan.
Thank you. Thank you very much indeed, Tomaso, for the introduction. So let me just say that this contribution is a joint, comes from a joint effort with colleagues Fabio Montobio, Marinerica Virgilito and Marco Vivarelli. And the title is Labour Saving Automation: A Direct Measure of Occupational Exposure. So we're trying to measure something, and I would be very, very happy to hear some feedback from the economics measurement community. So let me start. So the scare of wage of mass unemployment triggered by new digital technologies has attracted a lot of attention, both in the policy and the academic debates. And as it happens, there's all sorts of opinion out there. Some says that this time might be different because these are, they say, general purpose technologies that can be applied on many different scales with respect to, let's say, older, older new technologies, if you wish. Then there are shocking amounts of occupational categories that are thought to be a high risk of being automated. And this would include not just the usual routine task, but also service jobs and highly cognitive jobs. And finally, of the very, very short literature introduction that I, that I'm going through, it is thought that technology especially destroys the occupation in the so-called middle part of the wage distribution. So you would have, let's say, an inverse U-shaped exposure of these jobs to labour, what we will call labour-saving technologies. Now, in the literature, there've been a few measures already there which we deem indirect, and they usually use proxies to, to, to measure, proxies of, of, let's say, technology, of the impact of technology on the labour market, for instance, shares of computers in economic sectors or the share of robots in economic sectors of belonging. And also, they have constructed automation probability via expert's judgements and all sorts of classifier systems and machine learning tools. Now, as we said, these are all indirect measures, and this, there could be some confusion arising between firms and industry attributes, so at the level of aggregation, and also among heterogeneous technological artefacts. What we want to do is to provide a direct measure of, of exposure, so a direct machine task mapping for robotic patents. We are not the first to do that. There are few exceptions, but again, there are few exceptions in our, in our opinion. So we might as well give our contribution. And we will ask questions such as, how many jobs are at risk of being replaced by automation? And also, which occupations are the most exposed? So the starting point of this paper is a previous paper of ours, which focused on on patents with all the caveats that comes when you focus on patents. That is, you never know whether the inventions will ever get an application, get implementation in the production processes, of course. But let's say, what we usually answer to this is that there is still some level of economic commitment when you write a patent, when you get a patent grant. And so what we look for is more like the research effort or the heuristics therein. And let's say, we can say less about the actual applications. That is why, let me open up our emphasis, we are applying this measure. We are currently trying to, to match this measure with online job vacancy data, as they have been already described. So again, our starting point are labour-saving patents within, in robotics, let's say. And these are American patents published between 2009 and 2018. We have developed, let's say, a methodology to find out, to single out these labour-saving patents, which are patents that explicitly state in their description a labour-saving measure, a labour-saving message. And we do this first, selecting robotics patents and then doing a textual query at the sentence level with these words that you can see here, two, and then a lot of manual validations afterwards, in order to find a total of close to 1,300 truly labour-saving patents. Let me just give you an impression of them. I'm going to read to you excerpts. Automatic systems such as robotic systems are used in a variety of industries to reduce labour costs or, and/or increase productivity. And from the second one, the use of robotic technology results in improved management of information, services and data, increased efficiency, significant reduction of time, decreased manpower requirements and substantial cost savings. Emphasis is mine, but let's say, as you can see, some patents, not all patents, but some patents in there is but some patents in their description make some sort of economics, of sharp economic statements. And we leverage on these economic statements to find this set, to single out this set of labor-saving patents. Now, this is the workflow of our work. So the Montobio-told paper is our starting point. We have the set of labor-saving patents from which, in the present paper, which is what stands at the right of the panel, we take the CPC code definitions, which are the technological classification codes that are assigned to patent during the examination process at the patent office. And the main part is we build a text similarity measure between the code definitions of these CPC codes and task descriptions, which we take from the ONET, which is a dictionary, let's say, of occupation and tasks. And the ONET itself provides a means of aggregating this task into occupations. There will be some core tasks, some supplemental tasks. But let's say, the architecture of how to pass from the task level to the occupation level is already there. And finally, we will take some data from the Bureau Labor Statistics about employment. And we will see actually whether our measure makes sense or not. It gives actually some corroboration to what we find. So again, the main exercise is computing a text similarity measure between technological codes, which you take from the CPC classification, cooperative patent classification, and tasks from the ONET. And just to give you a couple of numbers, so we work at the four-digit level for CPC codes. There are 671 of them. And we have in excess of 19,000 different tasks which are marked to 900 plus eight-digit occupations. Now, we don't have a lot of time, so I don't want you to focus on the technicalities here. But the way we construct the similarity measure is basically we look at the frequency of co-coring words between pairs of documents, pairs of texts. So on the one hand, we would have a CPC code. On the other hand, we would have a task. And we do this for every possible pair of CPC codes and task. And we do not just count the frequency, we use what is called TF IDF. So we tend to attach more weight to those words which are very specific to a small set of documents. And we attach less, relatively less weight to those instead that might be frequent, but they appear everywhere across the document corpora. And we do this, we do all this processing for both the CPC corpus and the ONET corpus. And in the end, we compute the cosine similarity, which is what? Basically, we can see each patent, each text as a vector in an N-dimensional vector space defined by the frequencies of the underlying words. So we just want to compare pair-wise, pairs of vectors and compute the angle between them. So if two vectors have a parallel to one another, the cosine would be maximum and it means that they have the same frequencies of the same words. If instead they are orthogonal, it means they do not share any words in common and everything else in between. So just to give you an idea of this, we take a random CPC code, A23F, which reads coffee, tea, the substitutes, manufacture preparation and infusion thereof, coffee and tea pots and the rest. And I will show you the cosine similarity, which is in the box to the right, with two of ONET tasks. The first one would be prepare and serve a variety of beverages such as coffee, tea and soft drink. You can see there are four words, emphasis is mine, four words in common with the first code definition and the cosine similarity is pretty high. So it's a cosine which is bounded between zero and one because the underlying matrices are positive definite. So the measure goes between, goes from zero to one. The second task is set up and operate machines such as lathes, cutters, shears, bores, millers, grinders, presses, drills or auxiliary machine to make metallic and plastic war pieces. Now, here we have just one word in common with the first definition. And as you can see, it's also from a very different, let's say, framework, a very different environment. And the cosine similarity would be very low. So this is just for the sake of example. Now, we do this for every possible pair of CPC codes and tasks. So we end up with a big matrix. It's around 13 million entries, which is 671 times 19,000 plus. And in this matrix, we would have one row for each CPC code, one column for each task. And with the added benefit of knowing how to group occupations, which is the top row, as you can see, which is just groupings of tasks. And each cell would be the cosine similarity between this pair of CPC codes and task. Now, so far, this is just an exercise of basically measuring the similarity between the CPC classification and ONET tasks. Now, we want to tailor this on our set of labor-saving patents. And we do this by weighting the CPC frequencies, so the rows, by the CPC frequency in the collection of labor-saving patents, okay? Then, of course, what we're interested in is to know which tasks are more exposed. So we take column sum and then finally we rescale between zero and one. So we can get basically a ranking of tasks first and a ranking of occupations afterwards, which are most exposed to these labor-saving robotics technologies. I will skip this, it's about the task, so the way to aggregate tasks into occupations takes care of tasks that could be core or supplementary. And the way we do it reflects the internal, let's say, the internal cutoffs in the ONET. Now, so this is the results that we find. And so this is the top tasks by our rescale similarity measure. So one does not mean a 100% cosine similarity, it means it's the top one. But I will show you the whole distribution in a second. So tasks which are most exposed are basically in logistics, as we can see. So there's load materials and products into machines, move levers or controls that operate lifting devices such as forklift, position lifting devices under, over or unloaded pallets, you get the idea. This is the distribution of cosine similarity. We can see the most tasks are actually, actually display a zero similarity within our measure. And most of the cosine similarity is very, very low. So what I showed in the previous picture, in the previous chart, is basically what stands to the right of the vertical orange line. There's very little to be seen to the naked eye, so we are in the tail of the distribution over there. So tasks which have a humongously high similarity. This is once we aggregate by occupations, we get a slightly bigger picture. We can see, of course, industrial truck and tractor operators. We find out that there is also a lot going on into the automotive sectors like install, repair, machines, et cetera. But again, pockets and packages and so on. This, of course, once we aggregate the cosine similarity measure to occupations, we get a more, say, bell-shaped distribution. And what I showed is on the right of the vertical orange line. The final step is to take occupational data from the BLS. And we take employment levels, which exclude the self-employed and the median wage for six-digit occupations. And we take a snapshot of 2019, in 2019 for levels and we compute a 20-year growth rate between 1999 and 2019. And these two panels show robust locally weighted scatter-splot smoothing estimates of basically the relationship between the wage level and the cosine similarity that we compute. So we can see basically that when the cosine similarity is high, so the occupations which we predict are most exposed to labor-saving technologies are the ones which are lowest, which are least paid. And in the second panel, we can see that basically in dynamic terms, those occupations which display a high cosine similarity level value are the ones that shrunk over time. You can see that basically the bottom half of the graph is for negative employment growth between 1999 and 2019, which somewhat corroborates our measure. It says, okay, what we capture is something that actually have been saved, are jobs that have been saved in this time span at least. So let me wrap up a little bit. So the cosine similarity metrics that we compute is overall very sparse. We have very skewed distribution in both tasks and occupations. Having a high similarity is a very rare event, which also means tangentially that there is a very low probability of having a false positive. Everyone comes up with their numbers of how many people will lose their job, we want to give our own. So if we consider just the top decile, so the top 10% of our similarity distribution, that would, at least for the American workforce, that would amount to 8.6% of employees or 12.6 million were exposed to substitution. Although this could also be a conservative estimate because we do not know how many workers a single machine could substitute eventually. Then we see that the exposure to labor substitution is monotonically decreasing in wage. So we do not find the U-shaped pattern predicted by Icimoglu and co-authors. We see that when we aggregate to the two-digit occupations, these include transportation and material moving, so logistics, installation, maintenance and repair, especially in the automotive and engineering sector, but also some services like food preparation and serving. We see that exposure to substitution decreases in employment growth, okay? So the innovative efforts are directed towards what is the weakest and the cheapest segment of the labor force. And also, something I didn't show, probably there's not enough time. The most affected sector is in fact manufacturing, but there are also health and education services which rank quite high. And this suggests some sort of pervasiveness of exposure to labor-saving technology along the supply chain, along different sectors. And finally, when it comes to the US case, we can see a geographic divide between the US coast and inland especially. So most of the similarity, most of the occupational exposure that we compute is concentrated around the Rust Belt and the southern state, which are the ones that actually underwent a deindustrialization in the recent decades and where you have the highest prevalence of non-white communities. I'll stop here. Thank you very much for your attention so far.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jacopo. We have time for a couple of questions, if we can take them together. Is it okay, Jacopo?
Yeah.
You can start, Francesco.
Thank you, Jacopo, for the nice paper. Just a little question about, did you have, did you do any validation test on the criteria that you use to select the patents over which you do text mining? Because you use CPC code and then keywords. Maybe you are capturing some, like, the more similar patents. Maybe there are some papers showing that, I mean, somehow CPC code may drive your analysis toward a direction. Maybe as a validation test. I don't think that your main result would change, but it would be nice to see some tests to assess your robustness of the criteria, or the list of patents that you use to make the classification. Thank you.
Can I ask about the thing which only came up at the very end but was implied at some of what you said? You talked about, you kept on saying as the people at the very top end, the most affected. You didn't talk about the very bottom end except by implication. Except that at the very end, you suddenly said that there might be some health and education services which actually matched highly as well. They're the classic ones which you assume are not touched by such things. Can you say a little bit more about where they are?
Thank you. Jacopo, please go ahead.
Okay, on the validation of labor-saving patents. So this actually belongs to our previous paper, but it's a very interesting question. So what we've done there is basically, so we run this query, this textual query at a sentence level. We look for triplets of words like reduced labor costs, reduced human intervention and so on. There's 600 plus of these triplets. Once a sentence is flagged by this quite rudimentary algorithm, actually, we did manually investigate each and every one of them. Which, of course, limited our ability of, let's say, the scope of application of our, that's why we focused on robotics, basically. Now, we are currently, so those were validated manually. The algorithm flagged 1,700 patents, we ended up with less than 1,300. So there were around 20% of false positive. We are trying to automate that step. And we are trying to do it, let's say, in an automated way. We found a way which we have to leverage, let's say, on the semantic structure of the sentence and make sure that the verbal predicate, the direct object is actually related to the verbal predicate that we are looking for. And we, our way forward in that direction is to extend the same exercise to any patent, not necessarily to robotics, because we could find labor-saving heuristics outside of robotics, of course. So that's what we think could be one promising avenue of further extension. And the other question actually is also about the previous paper. So what's at the top, what's at the bottom? Here we see the exposure in the previous paper. We ran a topic model to find out what's going on in those labor-saving patents. And if I remember correctly, what we find at the bottom are basically mining operations, which, I don't know exactly why, but it looks like they cannot be fully automated or, let's say, maybe it's hazardous workspaces. I don't know exactly, but let's say, this is what we find when it comes to this substitution to robotics. We see already that, let's say, there are some embryonal heuristics for automating cognitive activities. This is more into the AI realm. Now, we have, we use a quite broad definition of robotics and we have about 20%, 20 to 25% of overlap with AI in this patent. So these patents are, one out of four of these patents overlap with other classifications that you could call AI. So that's what probably goes towards, let's say, the labor substitution in the service sectors and for more cognitive activities, which is what also Frey and Osborne seem to find.
Thank you very much, Jacopo. I'm afraid we need to move to the next presentation, but thanks a lot and round of applause, please. And now, moving to all other technologies. Kate, the floor is yours. Thank you very much.
Am I heard? Okay, cool. So, hello, everybody. Now, I'm going to present a common effort of this paper. My coffers actually are in the room, so in case the credit is also to them. So this paper differs from the previous presented in several ways, though it shares the idea of exposure. In this case, we also compute the exposure of industries to emerging automation technologies, not only to occupations. And here, we are not focusing only on robotics patents. We actually identify first the broad, the set of emerging automation technologies that include robotics, but actually by far broader, including AI, Internet of Things, neuromorphic computing. So actually potentially many different emerging technologies that impact further down the line industries and occupations. And my task is actually very hard this time because I will have to present one and a half paper. So this is the main paper and I will also briefly give you an overview of what we did in the previous paper that produced actually the set of emerging automation technologies. So there are plenty of technologies that are emerging actually every year and their development pace is quite fast. So in general, we wanted to know whether these technologies have an impact on the industries, markets and occupations and skills even down the line, that's next presentation is about. And what we wanted to see if at all these emerging technologies are relevant and if they are relevant, where they are relevant. So our contribution is twofold. First, we propose a methodology to do, to compute the exposure. And second, the very outcome of that methodology is a dynamic mapping of industries and technologies and occupations and technologies in terms of exposure of the latter. And this can inform many perspectives and it's also an updateable outcome. So as soon as new technologies arrive, we can detect them and then we can also update the mapping of exposure. So, sorry, spoiler alert. The main findings are the following, that actually occupations that are involved in non-routine tasks are getting more exposed to these emerging automation technologies that we identified. In terms of ISCO classification of occupations, the most exposed category at the broad aggregated level is technical associate professionals. So it's ICT operators, health associate, process and control technicians, financial associates, et cetera, et cetera. And the two next ones are machine operators and professionals. And the two next ones are machine operators and professionals. So professionals like doctors, medical doctors, which was what Jakob was saying before, that maybe that's more related to AI and we will see one example of such automation technology that does affect medical industry. And the point that these effects of exposure to emerging automation technologies, there is a difference, substantial difference between industries and occupations that produce these emerging technologies and those that are purely recipients of such. And we will see how that happens. But long story short is that producing sectors are associated with employment growth and while the sectors that are users will decline when it comes to heavily exposed users to the automation technologies. And these results are based regardless of the level of aggregation of taxonomies that we are using. So what we're using is the set of emerging automation technologies which we identified in the paper with my coffers. And this is a set of 500 emerging technologies based on patents and also 500 clusters of technologies based on publications. So I will be giving and talking a lot about patents, but keep in mind the same work is done or is going to be finalized for publications as well. And using these technologies, it's our input in this paper on exposure. And we will identify the exposure of industries at NACE II and occupations at ISCO 08. Then we will want to put that occupation measure in the wild and test whether that exposure metric that we computed is at all explanatory. It has any explanatory power in terms of change in employment that we observe over decades from 2010 to 2019. We will do two regions. One is EU and 28 countries and then we'll go down to German data specifically. I will explain why. So emerging technologies. So here I will just give a very brief overview of our methodology and results. They are not, would not be so visible, but maybe down the line it will. So first, we will take, we take the patents and their titles and abstracts. We concatenate them. We produce the document-level embeddings with the sentence transformers. And this is our starting point. This is our data that we cluster. First, we want to identify the most novel patents, the most novel documents inside that big set. We are doing that with a local outlier factor, algorithm detection. So we're basically creating the seeds of novelty within that whole space of patent documents. And then around these seeds of novelty, that these documents are outliers compared to the rest baseline corpus, we create neighborhoods of similarity to these seeds of novelty, which we call offshoots. So our final sample of novel patents, which around 200,000 patents, is this novel plus their similar neighborhoods. And this sample we cluster into 500, what ended up being 500 emerging automation technologies. There are various, these are technologies with application of blockchain to security and data transmission. These are the neuromorphic computing. These are also neural networks in application to medical imaging. This is a very broad range of emerging automation technologies. And these 500 technologies is that what we are working with for the exposure. Just a side note, though very important, every cluster out of these 500 clusters characterized by five metrics that identify stage of emergence of each of this technology cluster. And it's a radical novelty, the share of novel patents inside that cluster. It's a prominent impact as a share of the most cited patents in that cluster and so on and so forth. So we properly follow the methodology in order to say, yes, that's emerging really. It's not just cluster of something that kind of novel but does not move anywhere or has no impact down the line in terms of timeline. Now we are moving towards the exposure scores and this is the flow chart of our methodology in that paper on exposure. So as I said, we are taking patents, patent documents, using their title and we produce embeddings of those. Then we take industrial descriptions at a certain level of aggregation. We chose the three-digit NACE and also occupations and their titles and description of tasks that occupations do. Here I would like to stop and draw your attention to the fact that industries, they are descriptions of applications for the technologies. So this economic activity where the technologies are applied or produced. While occupations, they are represented by titles and tasks. These are categories and the functions that these technologies potentially can perform. So occupations are matched with technologies based on tasks and/or functions that these technologies can do. And industries are based on economic activities that these technologies can be applied or produced in. Then we get these combinations of patents and industries or patents and occupations and we compute cosine similarity that Jakob did a good job explaining before. So cosine similarity, basically how similar the description of the industry and the technology described in that patent. The same for occupation and technology. And then we get a set of potentially relevant pairs. But this is at the patent level. But we have, as you remember, 500 technologies. And then we need to aggregate this patent-level exposure to the technology-level exposure. So we have a metric of exposure of an industry to a specific technology in an aggregated way. So to give you an understanding what, how that looks, example of a technology that we have is medical image processing with machine learning. This is a cluster of patents represented summarizing phrase. And then to this technology, which industries on the left and which occupations on the right, you see and how strongly it's exposed. So this last column in both the tables is the strength of exposure. It's aggregated cosine similarity over all the patents in that cluster. And in industries, you can see that this is a mixture of industries that use that technology and industries that produce that technology. So the user industry is hospital activities and producer industry is clearly manufacture of medical and dental instruments and supplies. One of, not all of them. And this, for what concerns industry and occupation, here I invite you to look at the code of industry, of occupation and notice that a lot come from this code three, the first digit in the code, which is like seven out of 11. It's coming from this code three. It is exactly what I talked before about results is technicians and associate professionals. So a lot professions come, and occupations exposed to this particular technology come from that particular broader category of occupations. Then it comes the code two, which is like three out of 11. These are the professionals. So you see 2211, it's generous medical practitioners. So these are the doctors technically. And yeah, and so just moving further because of time constraints. This is actually three map of how different sectors of occupations, the bigger groups of occupations are exposed and the industry as well. So industrial exposure is clearly this manufacture of computer and electronic optical products, information service activities. These are the two industries that clearly produce a bunch of digital automation technologies. So the most exposed are the producers identified. But there are a couple of users. Financial service activities in the center of the left and advertising market research, retail and trade, so 47. So these are heavy users of the emerging automation technologies. On the left, it is occupations. And here we also see that there are some, we do not identify the producer or user at the occupation side, but we still can see that ICT operators and user support technicians, the process control technicians, they are potentially producers of emerging automation technologies, as well as other, some occupations that are pure recipients of these technologies. I would like to skip the identification of user and producer. Shortly speaking, it is, we leverage the portfolio, patent portfolios of companies that file these patents that constitute our 500 technologies. And based on their portfolio and specialization in patent in a specific industry, we can identify whether patent is using or producer of that technology and then we aggregate up to the 500 technologies. So this picture, two on the right is industries, on the left, no, sorry, vice versa. On the left is industries, on the right is occupations. What we can see here is an important pattern that from the top left to bottom right, if we look at here, this area from diagonally down, this gradual specter of industries that produce, that use heavily the emerging automation technologies down to those that produce actually emerging automation technologies. So this 26, the semiconductor industry, basically 62, which is information service activities. This is the area where rather producers are allocated and here there is the area where the users are allocated and then gradually morph into producers. The same holds for occupations. So these are the agricultural workers that are pure recipients of technologies. And here there are those who, occupations that rather producing the technologies. Now putting in the wild the exposure metric that we computed, we are looking at the effect of exposure on the employment growth. Very similar to what also Jakob presented. We relate the two metrics and we see whether there is an effect. So if we look at the model one, we see that actually the exposure metric is positive, meaning that the higher the exposure, the more employment. So it's actually job creation or augmentation of existing ones. But then if we include more information in the model and we include the producer and user in particular, we observe that actually that coefficient drops. It becomes significant negative because the explanation will break between producers and users. This is for the whole country, EU region. So it's not as specific to Germany yet, but I come to this in a second. And producer, effect of producer maybe is more visually clear here because this red line is producer. It's employment growth rate conditional on the level of exposure by occupation. So here from the left to right, the exposure increases and from the bottom to the top, the growth rate becomes from negative to the positive. And in case of producers, we see the, the more you are exposed as a producer, the more likely to see the growth in employment. While interesting that if you are in the producer sector, occupation, producing sector, but low exposure of the occupation, then the effect on the growth rate, on the employment growth is negative. Meaning that occupations in the producer sector that are with low exposure, that do not benefit a lot from new technologies that arrive and means that they are getting either eliminated or substituted or outsourced. The effect for light users is the opposite. Instead, the more exposed an occupation in the industry that is categorized as light user, the more likely that the growth rate will, the smaller the growth rate which gets to negative. Then because here we have the NACE I, it's very aggregated sectors here in order to produce this graph. So it's like manufacturing is in the NACE category, it's C. And there are both beverage, producers of beverages and producers of computers. They are in the same class C. So we need to disaggregate. And we only had available data to test that for Germany. That's why we moved to only Germany from the whole EU and test the same specifications just for, now we have data on two-digit level of disaggregation, meaning that we have more diversity. We have more decomposition power to unpack. And here, the effect becomes even more pronounced that the higher the exposure, the more likely that occupation in the producing sector grows. That still holds. But then we have this U inverted shape that if you are heavy user, if you're industry and occupation as a heavy user, the Q1 category is the heavy user, Q4 is the lightest user, so it decreases. So the more a category, the more an occupation is exposed in the heavy user, the smaller is the growth rate. So it's actually, the more negative the growth rate gets. So that we witness potentially the substitution effect once the occupation is exposed a lot in the heavy user sector. So it may be capital deepening. Think about the finance industry where algorithmic prediction is already done a lot and then coming with AI and other more automated, more intelligent technologies that becomes even more refined prediction. So it becomes even, with capital deepening, it becomes even more substituted and people are less hired anyway. So that's our main takeaways. Occupations that have affected are actually non-routine tasks because also we take into account the service innovations and service-related emerging technologies. Producers, they're associated with higher exposure and creation of jobs. While producers that are associated with low exposure, they actually experience substitution and hence negative growth rates. And that pattern holds across different levels of aggregation. Thank you for your attention. I'm sure you have questions. Please ask.
Thank you very much, Kate. So we have, yeah, space for one or two quick questions. Anybody would like to start? Do you have a question?
Because there are large numbers of data points on those charts, it's very difficult to actually see who is who, except possibly some of the endpoints. But can you say a little bit more about those who are at the very bottom end of exposure? And again, I'm particularly interested in occupations in things like the health sector where exposure might be very, very limited. But I'm not talking about, A, the AI end, as I, we talked about earlier. I'm actually talking about the exposure to, say, robotization-type products. So I'm talking about, I'm talking about services, certain kinds of services within the health sector.
Should I answer right now or?
Just, is there any other question? Okay, yeah, please go ahead.
We at the moment haven't looked into which particular technologies drive the exposure. So there could be many technologies that we have and we cover a very broad spectrum. But health workers, like medical and pharmaceutical technicians, they are quite exposed. You can see right here. Sorry?
It's the other ones. I see them because they are a category.
In the other, sorry, what?
So like the nurses or?
Yeah, they are, this particular, so it does not, it's not labeled in the classification to the details potentially that you are asking. But the point is that almost all medical occupations, they are quite exposed. So there are not, because they are exposed to not only product innovations, they're also exposed to service innovations. And like the software that helps to automate the job that is done in health, for health professionals and associates.
But is this paramedical and other health professionals exactly there where you are, which is quite high? I'm afraid we have to, sorry for the next one. Yeah, we need, thank you very much, Kate. Another round of applause, please. And we have to leave the last presentation to give equal time, which is now combining everything together, hopefully. And Fabian is going to give the next presentation. Thank you very much.
Okay, can you read me? Yeah, let's try. It's okay. So hello, my name is Fabian Petit. I'm a research fellow at the University of Sussex at the Science Policy Research Unit. So I'm going to present to you the next part of this pipeline, which was about identifying those emerging technologies and then looking at their exposure. And here we are looking at the adoption of those emerging technologies. So because we are running a bit out of time, I will try to keep it short. So I might skip some slides, but of course I'm really open for discussion after the presentation. So I might skip some slides, but of course I'm really open for discussion after the presentation. So I think being the fourth in this session, I don't have to motivate the question. But basically until now, we have looked at the exposure of industries and occupation to those emerging automation technologies. The thing is that we know little about the effective adoption of those technologies. If you think about autonomous car, neural networks, cloud computing. So we want to understand whether those firms in Europe, for instance, they really adopt or not those technologies which are really recent and developed during the last decade. The problem is that you cannot knock at the door of companies and ask them, did you adopt this one and what about this one? So what you can do though, is that you can look at online job vacancies and you can look at the skills and knowledges that they ask for. And if you are able to make a link between those skills and knowledges with the technologies, then you can see by the change in the labor demand for those skills and those technologies, whether the firms are massively adopting those emerging technologies or not. So this is basically what we do. So we identify European firms' adoption of science, technologies and innovations that emerged between 2010, 2020, which are basically the data that Kate presented in the previous, in the previous talk. And we look at this through the change in the labor demand. Our identification strategy is that basically we assume that the changes that we observe in the labor demand for skills and knowledges that will, that again are related to those emerging STI reflects the firm's adoption of those latter. In terms of the preview of the results, we find that basically a fifth of the emerging STI are adopted across, but also within European regions, industries and occupations. Two fifths are adopted either across or within, but not both. And lastly, the remaining parts are not massively adopted across those regions, industries and occupations in Europe. We also can find that half of those STI are going to be labor augmenting. So they will be, they will be complementary to labor and they will increase the demand for skills and knowledges. But we also find that half, so the other part are labor replacing. In terms of contribution, we show that basically three fifths of those STI are adopted massively across European firms. We also contribute to the literature on labor technology complementarity because we provide a novel data-driven methodology that is based again on state-of-the-art NLP techniques such as sentence transformers that Kate presented earlier on. And lastly, we are using those CEP, so database with about 180 million online job vacancies that were posted between 2018 and 2022. So that are the contribution, those are the contribution of this paper so far. So in terms of this presentation, I will basically give you an overview of the data. So we have three data sources. The first one are the emerging STI, which are identified in the first paper by, led by Shugat, who is here, and also in which Tomaso and Kate participated in. And so we have lots of novel patents that which are classified into 90 emerging STI, which are very, much more aggregated than what you saw before. But we have basically autonomous vehicle, you have cloud storage, those kind of technologies. The second source is, as I said, online job vacancies with millions of online job vacancies for which we have data, information on occupation at four digits, industry at two digits and region at net free. And those includes, they include about 2,600 skills and knowledges. For those skills and knowledges, we are going to rely on the SCO classification with a three level of use. So basically you will find skills which are specific to either an industry or occupation, cross-sector, so transferable or transversal. So that is the classification that we are going to leverage. In terms of methodology, so this figure is a bit similar to the one that you observed before. The difference here is that we are going to have the patents from which we get the titles, the skills and the knowledges from which we'll get the description. We are going to derive the embeddings, as Kate previously explained. And we are going to get the cosine similarity. And then we do a bit of filtering because you don't want to get produce links between skills and technologies. So for each patents, we are going to retain the top 10 skills, which lowers down basically the number of relevant pairs. And then you aggregate at the technology level and then you apply a second filtering and you end up basically with, with about 2200 relevant pairs of skill and technology. So here is an example of cloud storage. For instance, what you have as a label is the skill. So this is a knowledge, specific knowledge about data storage, data warehouse, NoSQL. And on the right hand side, on the last column, you have the score, the cosine similarity score for between that skill and that technology. And so you see that those skills are quite relevant regarding that technology. So here there are a bunch of statistics regarding the matches we get, the pairs between technology and skills. And as you can see, on average, technology is matched with 25 skills or knowledges. And those which are paired are rather similar to those which are not paired. The difference being that most of those are knowledge specific. So there is an over representation which makes sense because we are looking at technologies for which we want knowledge which are specific. Here is an example of the top three matched skills and knowledges. So just to give you an insight of what how the skills, which are very important in our technologies, administer ICT system, for instance, or electronic communication. The thing is that we identify those adoptions through the change in the labor demand. So we have to characterize the labor demand. So I will just present you what is basically the extensive labor demand, which is the number of online job vacancies which are demanding skill S in a given region, given industry, given occupation, given year. And then you have the intensive labor demand, which is the share of online job vacancies in that specific scale cell, which is demanding the skill S. So one is the measure of the diffusion across the industries, the occupations and the regions. The other one is a measure of the intensification of the use of those technologies within those cells. So then you aggregate. So it's very simple here, you have weighted aggregation for intensive labor demand. Once you aggregate, basically you can look at the country level where there are some change in the labor demand. So this is for the skill, for the knowledge about embedded system. What you have here is that on the left-hand side is the level in 2018. What you have on the right-hand side is a change between 2019 and 2022. So what you observe is that the role of, you, you want basically to account for country heterogeneity with such things such as fixed effects in an empirical specification, which is the following. But before presenting the empirical specification, just one word about this assumption. So we, as I said, we assume that when we observe a change in the labor demand for skill S, which is related to a technology K, we are basically looking, we are basically observing the firm's adoption of that technology. And so when it's a positive change, it means that the firm's adoption will be labor augmenting. When it's a negative change, it's going to, it's going to be labor replacing. And what we are going to look is the change in the labor demand for a set of, for the skills which are related, linked to technology, with two specific technologies between 2019 and 2022, conditional on their level in 2018 to account for reverse to the mean. So here is the specification for the level, but the one that we are interested in is this one. So you have the change on the left-hand side in the labor demand for skill S in country C. You have the dummies if basically, so this is the one, if the pair between a skill and the technology is relevant, this will be accounted for. And this is where we are going to get the variation to identify whether those technologies are adopted. So just a map of what's going on. So what you observe at the top, so the northeast of this figure are the technologies which are adopted. So it means that there is a change in the extensive labor demand and but also a change in the intensive labor demand. So there are, there is diffusion across occupations, industry and regions as well as identification in the use of those. And this is positive, so it's labor augmenting. So you have things such as medical device, real estate, recycling. You also find robots, interestingly. On the bottom here, you have technologies which are labor substituting, labor replacing. And those are, the skills which are related to those technologies tend to be less and less demanded, which means that they are getting replaced by those technologies. We can derive lots of different figures from that. There will be, of course, a working paper. But we can summarize by saying that in this paper, we are able to look at the diffusion and the intensification of the use of those technologies through the change in the labor demand, which was me to the conclusion, to repeat what I said in the introduction, is that basically 23% are adopted across and within European regions, industrial occupations, whereas 38% are not massively adopted, but yet, because we are looking at again emerging technologies which emerged during the last decade. Yeah, so thank you for your attention. And of course, I would be very happy to answer to any question and you can reach me if you are interested in this literature. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fabian. That is extremely short, as we have plenty of time for questions. Anybody would like to ask for clarification or?
So just on your last bullet there, 50% of emerging technologies are.
Can you, can you speak a bit louder?
Yeah, so 50%, your last bullet, 50% of emerging technologies are labor augmenting.
Yes.
50% replacing. Is that by the number of technology rather than the amount of employment?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So this is like out of the 90 technologies we identify, 50, roughly 50, 50 between labor augmenting and labor replacing. But this is not weighted by the current employment.
So I mean, it would be quite interesting just to know, you know, what's, what does that translate to in employment space?
Yes, that's a good point. Thanks.
Any questions?
Thanks. The other question, the question I have in mind was due, so some technologies are labor augmenting and some technology are labor replacing, labor saving. However, it seems to me that it's unlikely that these technologies will be adopted in a void in the sense that, is it, do you have any sense of how likely it is that technologies are adopted in bundles by the same industry? And what the concurrence is between labor augmenting and labor replacing technologies within the same industry and even better industry occupation?
Yes. I think that's a very good question. So as you see, I've been a bit fast on this, but what we do is that we have like the change in the labor demand at very granular level. But then we aggregate at the moment because we are really interested in the massive adoption of those. But what you have in mind is basically whether those technologies could be adopted as bundle. But this also, and but also what is underlying is the fact that because of this massive aggregation, we are missing lots of heterogeneity that can happen at the regional level or across occupations. And basically in the next projects, which will be related to this methodology and those data, we are going to dig at a more granular level that we have available. But that for the moment, we aggregated for, to make the message more simple. I think we would be able to identify the bundles in, we think in terms of industries and occupations, but I cannot say more at the moment, but thank you.
And you have a question here?
Yeah, thanks. You had to whizz along and you whizzed along at one stage. I think it was in the last graph where you mentioned my favorite thing of robots. And you made a comment about the robots, but I didn't have enough time to actually see what they were doing.
Yeah.
There. Could you, could you just say a little bit more about it? And perhaps could you, I mean, it is relative to labor demand because it's also inflation to the very first question about, was it technologies that you were talking about or were you talking about employment? Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, thank you so much for spending a bit of time to allow me to spend a bit of time about this comment I made quickly. So what you see on this slide, which is a bit of a reshuffle. So here you have the level of the labor demand in 2018 and then you have the change on the Y-axis. What is very interesting here is to see that robots, basically, the change in this demand for skills and knowledges which are related to robots increases, but only in the regions, occupations and industries in which it's already present. So it means that there is an intensification of the use of this technology in those specific cells. But if we look at the extensive labor demand, which is looking at the diffusion across those regions, industry and occupations, you observe that actually the change is not significant, which means that basically if you want to extrapolate a bit more, places in which there are already robots are using even more and more robots, whereas places in which they don't have robots yet are not necessarily adopting or increasing the labor demand for skills and knowledges which are related to those latter. Thanks.
So I just had one, which was, do you have any views on whether the pace or extent of the intensive and extensive margins have changed over time? So do firms, are firms adopting technologies much more quickly in more recent times? Or is it spreading more across industries or regions? There's just that time dynamic.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I think your question relates to the point, to the previous point, because you are interested in spatial differences, right? In the adoption or could be like industry or differences between. Yeah, so for the moment, we haven't unpacked, unpacked this, but of course it's on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay. We started a little bit late, but I was informed that we need to close in about three, four minutes because we need to set up the room for the next session. So I think instead of having a panel here, we're probably having a panel during the coffee break. I invite you to approach all of the speakers during the coffee break for general questions. But we have still a couple of minutes. So if there's any question to any of the papers, please, please do raise. There's one more. Unexpectedly, there's one more question.
Can I, can I ask the question which I started off asking to the very first?
Is it to everybody or just?
I'm now going to put it to everybody as well because we talked about, we've talked about jobs and, but have we talked about things like, we talked about regions as well, but we did talk very briefly about gender dimensions of jobs. Is there anything that any of you can say about that as well? Given that that is something which once upon a time we used to be mainstreaming, I think was the word in question. So is there anything that any of the others can say about that?
Shugat, maybe you can talk about your work.
So I think the main trouble with finding gender dimension in the European data is that explicit gender requests are banned. So what Les suggested, that maybe you could look at occupations, that would be very hard. But in a couple of papers, and one of them I'm presenting tomorrow as well. So in that, we look at which skills are associated with women and men and by, by the employers, based on online job advertisements, using a couple of different methods. And then we look at how different applicants respond to the mention of those skills to sort of figure out how applicants perceive those skills. And there are a bunch of papers, there's one paper by Conan Coethers, which, which got published in Journal of Development Economics. And it looks at these gender words in China. There's another paper which kind of uses R-word skills to extend the gender preferences in, in case of China again. So the best possible way to be, would be to maybe look at these maybe psychological aspects and then find out which words are more similar to words associated with women.
I just think, I think it's interesting that you can go and do that in somewhere like China where they're relatively shameless about what they're allowed to ask for. But I mean, yes, I suspect, and it comes back to the answer to the first question, is that you're actually going to have to look at these jobs in terms of their breakdowns, in terms of their occupational composition in total. I mean, I, I came to this not because I was asking questions about gender, but many years ago, I used to work on the area of age and employment. And I was actually sort of interested in some of this because are these the kinds of industries which are favoring? Well, in that case, it was certain age groups. Hence I come to say gender groups or ethnic groups or something like that. But are that, you know, do, do these things spread out evenly? Or do they tend to touch certain demographic groups more than others? And I mean, that was what was actually interesting finally about our final presentation is because you actually did. because you actually did start drilling down at least to the level of regions. So you got beyond just sort of industries and occupations, but you got to do places as well. Thanks.
Let me add one more thing. So these gender associations are also changing a lot over time as the exposure to these technologies is increasing and that's.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's precisely the point. I mean, can I very quickly, I mean, many years ago, I worked in, and I was working in Germany at the time, and the education and employment ministries were terribly keen about opportunities to increase, it was called Girls in Men's Jobs, was the, effectively the translation of it. And because this is a very long time ago, the men's jobs were terribly typically men's jobs and the girls who were going into it were very much the people who didn't go into them then. And the point is, does that still apply? Well, one knows to some extent it doesn't, but one knows to some extent that there are still very definitely, however much there might have been some movements, there is certainly quite a lot of solidification as well there. So I think it's a very interesting question and hence I'm interested in what you say. And hence I was interested in what a lot of people said today. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And thanks to the audience for staying so long and eating a little bit into the, the coffee break. I hope you get a glimpse about how much can be done with the existing data to understand better how different technologies emerging will affect jobs positively and negatively in the future. So thanks a lot. I'd like to thank again, Lee, Kate, Jacobo and Fabian for presenting really interesting results. Thank you, see you later.